The location of the next meeting of the Avery County Public Commissioner scheduled for January the 4th, 2021 at 3:00 Pacific PM will temporarily be changed to the new community center at the April filter extension building, 661 Belrose, NMC. The meeting is open to the public and will be live streamed on YouTube. The link to YouTube is provided at duckduckduckduck.com/AveryCountyNC. And we want to welcome each one that's here today and for special occasion, they sit on this table. And this is our first meeting in my new building. I think that we have such a good crowd. All right, we'll move right along to 3.1, our invitation and Mr. Menasaw, would you leave us some back?
Lord, we're grateful to you for another day, for everything that proceeds from you to us. Lord, for the beauty of the world around us or the assembly that we're gathering here today. Lord, we are mindful of the needs of all those around us as we go through a difficult time and pray your hand, healing, comfort, support for all those that need to feel that even today. Lord, we pray that as we may here to conduct the business of this county, you give us wisdom, discernment, guidance for about the things that you have placed us here for, the people trust us to do and we thank for all that you are going to do and will do in the future. We praise the Christ name. Amen.
Amen.
If you would, then draw us by hand and say, "I pledge my life and my family, parents, to you, please, our Father."
Our blessed relations with my heart, but we cannot mistake it for their. You are the Father, who is the Son, and who is the God of all, and who is the Lord of all.
That's what we see. Our special occasion for today is to carry in Warren Daniel. And if you would please, more bring up your life and the judge and all that's wanted to do for him.
This is such a wonderful honor for me. This is my first official duty as Associate Justice of North Carolina Supreme Court. And I'm absolutely humbled and honored that Senator Warren Daniel is allowing me this privilege. And so Senator Warren Daniel, will you please put your left hand on the Bible and raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Warren Daniel, solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution and laws of the United States.
I, Warren Daniel, solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution and laws of the United States.
And I sincerely swear that I will be faithful and be of true allegiance to the state of North Carolina.
I solemnly and sincerely swear that I will be faithful, be of true allegiance to the state of North Carolina.
And to the constitutional powers and authority which are
which are the constitutional powers and authorities of church.
Or may be established for the government thereof
or may be established for the government thereof.
And that I will endeavor to support, maintain, and defend the Constitution and laws of said state.
That I will endeavor to support, maintain, and defend the Constitution and laws of said state.
Not inconsistent with the Constitution of the United States
not inconsistent with the Constitution of the United States.
To the best of my knowledge and ability.
To the best of my knowledge and ability.
And I solemnly and sincerely swear that I will faithfully discharge the duties of my office
solemnly and sincerely swear that I will faithfully discharge the duties of my office.
As a member of the Senate of the 2021 General Assembly of the State of North Carolina
as a member of the 2021 General Assembly of the State of North Carolina.
To the best of my knowledge and ability, so help me God.
To the best of my knowledge and ability, so help me God.
Congratulations. As I stated earlier, this is truly my honor and privilege to be able to do this today. And I know what a wonderful senator you have and I know that you know that. But I'd like to remind you a few things and then I'd like to just tell you a little bit about mine. I'm just so honored to be here and be able to call this wonderful public servant friend. Well, as you know, he grew up around these parts and he was an Eagle Scout, which tells you right off the bat that he was going to be a wonderful gentleman and fellow in society. He went off to West Point and then served our country for six years. And what is absolutely remarkable is this is going to be his sixth term, his 11th and 12th year in the North Carolina General Assembly. I was very privileged to get to work very closely with Senator Daniel during the other six years that I was a senator with him there. And he took me under his wing and he mentored and helped me. Because you see, he and I, he chaired the Judiciary Committee for the North Carolina Senate for 10 years. And four of those years, I got to chair with him. And I will tell you that this man is a man of self-discipline, integrity, and professionalism. But the thing that's most remarkable, in my opinion, about Senator Warren Daniel is his independence and his dedication to the Constitution and the rule of law that is so important to the stability and bedrock of our society and our country. I saw him day in, day out in the Senate, take on some pretty powerful courses and stand up sometimes almost by himself for the right thing. This gentleman, this public servant, was there at the right time doing the right thing for the right purpose. And so you're not just fortunate to have him as your senator. We are fortunate as the citizens of North Carolina to have him in leadership in the North Carolina Senate and for him to be willing to continue that leadership for us. So Senator Daniel and Mrs. Daniel, and I do want to say this. Mrs. Daniel, thank you because the greatest sacrifices are made at home with you and your three daughters to allow Senator Daniel to serve in the capacity that he has all these years. So thank you for me having the opportunity to share my experiences with my dear friend, Senator Warren Daniel.
Thank you, Justice Behringer, Tamara. First of all, I want to thank the commission, Chairman Hicks, and all of you who are here, elected officials, Renee, Teresa, and other judges elected commissioners from Burke County. One of our pastors is here and just friends from Avery County. It's an honor for me to do this. And when I, this is my sixth time. So when I was re-elected, we had the option to just wait until we get back to Raleigh on January 13th and be sworn in there. But I thought, you know, even though it's my sixth time, it's still always special. And it's special too now because I represent Avery County. And I wanted to do it up here for that reason. And so thank you, Philip, for making your arrangements for this. I've been sworn in now by a member of the judiciary from every level of the non-county court except until today that was on the Supreme Court. And I thought, how wonderful it would be if I could get my good friend Tamara Behringer, who was just elected to the Supreme Court, to come all the way to Avery County and do this for me. And so it's really an honor, Justice Behringer, for you to do this today. And we kind of had a quid pro quo, which was if I would attend her, I'm not saying she made this, she was doing this joke. If I would come to her swearing in Chapel Hill, which we did yesterday, and she had a wonderful ceremony there. And then she came all the way to Avery County. And what a beautiful day it is here in Avery County on top of this mountain. And you can see why Avery County is one of the great gems of North Carolina. It has great management here with these commissioners that are good friends of mine. And so I want to thank you for accommodating us and allowing us to be here. Thank you, Lydia, for all that you've done. Like Justice Behringer said, she's supported me throughout many years of politicking and working in the Senate. And it's just been wonderful. So thank you all. And I look forward to serving Avery County again for the next two years. And I know that Philip will be sending me multiple text messages every time he has a question or something that affects Avery County. So we're glad to do all that we can to
Thank you for taking the text message. You never want me to.
All right, so thank you again. God bless everybody. Appreciate you being here and making the trip up.
All right, we're going to take about five minutes breaks before we run back in or come back in to our meeting. So anyone that wants to leave or whatever, feel free. And we'll be in our seats five minutes.
Thank you, State Trooper contingent. We appreciate it for being here. Thank you, all the friends.
Hey Jim.
Oh, you're down, bro. You all right? Good to see you.
I told you, you were about to lose labor.
Yeah.
Recognize that fellow there?
There it goes.
It's him. It's him that killed. He's right there. You met your friends ago at the rainfall again. My two fairly tall NC State friends that were with me, one of the pictures, they look very tall compared to him. David, I dragged the ground on those boys.
I don't fan any of them. I just need to stay.
I just need to...
The tallest scotch can you ever see. In the Grand Ballgame.
Well, you were graduated.
Time for...
I was a freshman scout. I think you guys played all the way through this week. I remember the good boy. She felt too proud. He's only... That didn't happen.
You could see it was beautiful.
More than I see.
That's three dollars.
No, I wish.
I'll go down there. I think I met you one time. He said that's all I...
I'm coming back. Appreciate it. Thank you, Daniel. We appreciate you coming out.
Thanks, Brian.
Good seats, sir.
Okay. It's okay. Thank you.
You, uh, people, it's been a while, man, Justice.
Oh, yes.
You got that big forehead like me. When you see, then I saw you. Take care.
Please stay until the meeting.
I'll be back.
We'll count on it.
Phillip said to be texting.
Before he did that.
She's not joking.
Is he one of the subdivision?
Yes, he is, yes.
All right, we'll bring our new executive order. We'll go to 3.2A Proclamations and Awards. Do we have anyone?
Ma'am, there we do not.
3.2. Do we have anyone that signed up for public comment? You see. 3.2C, Laura Quanti. We have one position open in our Economic Development Advisory Committee. We have two applications.
So, the applications are for Angela Berry and David Tate. Those have been advertised, and you all have enough to review them. So, I believe it's time for a vote.
All right, we have our sheets before us, and we will make sure and sign them and date.
We want one or go with one, two?
One, two. And they will be put in the address.
Okay, we have Angela Berry, Bob Zeropstein, and David Tate.
The Angela Berry is our nominee.
I plead a motion for that.
Who's the four Angela Berry? Senator.
Howling Vaper, raise your right hand. I don't know if we have to fill our vote or not today, so we're on the end key.
I think so.
Okay. All right. Go ahead, Mr. Bynum.
Wait a minute. Aye. Good evening, June, you're a...
Martha, hit side.
Hit Phil's side. Hit us all the time.
All right.
Thank you, Laura, and I look forward to working with Ms. Berry. She's very interesting. I look forward to the relationships.
All right, we'll move right along to 3.3A Subdivision Approval Phrase. One Sunset Lots at Eagle's Nest and Caverns at Eagle's Nest.
Yes, ma'am. David County Plan Board has approved two areas in the Eagle's Nest subdivision. The areas for final approval are lots. S88 to S92, that's phrase one, Sunset Lots, Eagle's Nest. Sunset Lots received the final approval for the five tracks of which, for earmarked prior as future development, these lots are in fall tree, fire department vision, and close to the back end because of the... Lots C86, 88, 90, 96, C99, or C103, Caverns at Eagle's Nest. These cavern lots are also in the marked area as future development, and are located near the main district of the day, under the coverage of the bad rap party. The plan board has received and given approval for these tracks. Mr. Lacy, Chairman and myself will find out at the time. Any questions for you?
All right, I'd like to ask a question.
No, we're... And I think there were several questions, several things that were left out on these plates that they didn't owe any rest to me.
Yes, and the black man and myself know that, and we all get it, I know this. Actually, the third class was not approved, but we tried to do today, but it won't be next month. Because there was a discrepancy in the minutes and hours and the coordinate. So, we want to make sure to Mr. Daniel, Mr. Seber, I have to go into the department.
Thank you. I hope you approve.
All right, we have Mr. Woody Hallard Young make the motion to approve and what plans. Second it, how do you vote, Mr. Bynum?
I have a question.
Okay.
Motion of the Board. Uh, how many? Is there a racks of a number of lots that can be brought in this manner that was on?
Um, no, sir. No, it's just a base element, so it doesn't... These are actually sections that have been subdivided for. And now that they bought their infrastructure, the roads and utilities, now they're extending into that infrastructure. There's not really a map, you know? Every time is a big thing. The geography in every county, there's a slope over 50% of the David County area is over 50% of slope. So, every side is site-specific. It's very hard, it's very complicated. Keep things in the driveway. And once you get the driveway, you get your buildings out. Then you start looking at your set, well-set backs and all that. So, you take it in phases in order to see how our infrastructure and utilities are going to play into. I mean, last time I went to the, that flyaway, it was pretty, pretty much slow when you're coming down there like this weekend on ice and snow. So, it was not a map, you know? And the reason that they're doing it, and I actually recommend it, is to develop, is framing in phases. And that way, they each use the proposal separately, and then place your infrastructure, invite the infrastructure. Then you can see what's available, what's coming there.
I understand, and for this one, probably, if a hundred lots would be looked at any differently in terms of how presented the plan board and you like?
Uh, it may be more than that. I mean, once you get to a hundred lots, let's say, last time, you know, we were constructing there, we were constructing the other thousand pound water thing. Now, when we start getting the double chapter numbers, what are we going to do, water points? With accessibility, monitor, emergency vehicles, fire hydrants, fire alarm, PMS, all that stuff. I mean, it's just, it's a lot more technical, a lot more volatile, and still same question.
So, my concern is, and I mean, I tell you, you're following all the regulations that have now, is that ten presentations of ten sell a hundred. And if we look at it in, if only in pieces, we end up with a whole that is substantially more than the sum of the parts. And that is my concern, is that we deal this in parts and pieces, any development, not just legal, but any development, if we're looking at here. And we end up with something that's greater than the sum of the parts. And I think that is my concern as we go forward. And obviously, this, we have to abide by regulations that have in place here, and they are being followed. I don't think, you know, concerned as I said, is the perfect original. But it does concern me that we seem to not have any control on the top end of what this eventually, this redevelopment, might eventually be without somebody else going in, that's my concern.
Well, David County's pro-life. Every of the 29 counties in western Ohio, they're always looking at us because we have subdivision orders, and we have the oldest density rates in the state. We're preserving our orchard. I know lots of that are now, tracks of land and people own that they have an orchard plant on. You know, and they, and they, sometimes, you know, sometimes they do come to be. That's what's going on. Well, Eagle's Nest is very fresh, and they're doing the orchard place. The 40 counties are going to stabilize your mass, stabilize your soils for one of 10 counties in the state that has their own segmentation program. And I'm not going to write them out. I just received the state, they will update the level of every program. And I'll be looking at the program, and our program above and beyond was there twice. That was part of me by Angela Lacy, Jim, Eric, Joe, Perry. They have Quinn, and all those people back 20 years ago. Uh, Avery County is the most impressive county in western Ohio. We have the steep slope design of it. Slow failed to tax the town, killed two people. Within six weeks, I got the steep slope design amendment to our grade. We assess the engineering standards in western North Carolina for engineering steep slopes. We are progressive. I recommend to developers, the planning and financing in pieces. I don't want to cite Ray Donn's name, but he brought 70 lots to the commission. Now he has 70 parcels of improved property that he's going to pay taxes. Cleaned it up, had it settled. That was one of those learning moments to me in that you don't need to bring 50, 60, 70 lots at a time. seventy lots at the time because you're going to get six tax bills, sixty tax bills on that. That's improved product. That's not two thousand to five thousand dollar, uh, for your product. You can use for your product, you can press use pay. What we're doing, what our planning board does, you take five thousand dollars of for your land and you put a half million dollars on one. We just ready to tax place a thousand percent. So, uh, I go with Avery County. I go with my planning board. It's awesome. My case, you can always speak for him, pass, and let me help me. And it's been a team now, it's been one person. And, uh, I don't, I do not, I do not help people bring seventy, eighty, a hundred lots at the time. But you're not going to sell seventy, eighty, a hundred lots. You sell, you have to sell, you have six, eight or ten valuable, six, eight or ten more, you get them right on the sale. And as you're doing that, you're developing infrastructure. Avery County is part of, I'm sorry, I'm, I'm, I appreciate you guys.
I'd submit on that note that we don't really need to be looking at trying to cap anything or, or look at that in game because who knows what's, I mean, we can't, you can look at T league, but you can't know tomorrow, I mean, the bottom of the call of this thing tomorrow or May term, you know, we can keep doing what we're doing for the next ten years. I mean, realistically, we've got planning board, we've got professional developers, we've got, we've got very competent people that are doing this. And I don't see any reason to, to call into question what they're doing. When it's going through that many levels of scrutiny already, um, I, I don't think we need to be worried about where it's going to end. That's just my opinion.
Then a whole thing to remember on these is you got to show you can fix the pieces coming in, but when we think like that C section or S section, there's been any overall preliminary planning approval for the entire C lot section or the entire S lot. But if that S lot, we're looking to not approve like five, six lots on there, but the planning board has done a number of sections of about sixty lots in that phase. So they're looking for the entire master plan of the S section, but we're bringing after that, we're taking it back to moving in phases. So there, I think what we're reporting is, is they have a little kind of overall grand scheme of each of those sections getting overall master plan plan here. And then we take, like, in place of food planning board, which is what you guys, you know, seeing, you're getting seen, I guess, overall, which was originally, not everybody with the Ms. Mark of the past, if we do master plans with the planning board.
And once, but once you approve with those important job, well, that's, that's the damage department, matter, uh, facts, it could matter. Uh, now creating a parcel book indeed in the code, so with parcel tag. Mr. Daniel, you send them a Christmas service. Sorry, my, 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 my,
approved.
Do we have any explanation of the, of the, of the question?
Just why it happened?
All right, we have a motion and a second on the floor. We have to be close, Mr. Van.
Wait, a minute. Aye. Will Young, June, you got it?
Martha, hit side.
Hit both sides. Hit us all the time.
Yeah, because it's one of my thoughts.
How much more land? I mean, of course, I'm, I'm guessing, how much more land have you got, you can actually develop, do you know?
Uh, it would be a guess, but right now we got, so they brought in, we'll probably set them up. We'll probably set them to be, if you can put in like something like that. Some of that's not what we can develop, some of that we, community areas, uh, precincts. Uh, that is, that's what I'm now, um, for, most of all, we can get, as we got, and we got a line and mail on that, that section. We got some, some more deep down, probably, but they're going through, we're doing some, uh, well, I'll tell you, organic garden areas, uh, some more, uh, I guess, energy gardens, if you can look for, you know, something to buy in lots, so those close up, I can add some areas, a big part of the, of the lots, really a plus of how we're going to do it.
Thanks, guys. Thank you very much.
All right. We need to amend our agenda. Right, see? All right, three point three C, uh, our Avery County EMS is wanting to discuss the rights. I hear that we have, uh, make the motion to?
Move your hands.
All right, we have the motion, we have a second. All right. Have you voted, Mr. Van?
Wait, a minute. Aye. Will Young, June, you got it?
Martha, hit side.
Hit both sides. Hit us all the time.
All right. We will move right along then. Uh, we have three point three B, our tax administrator's report through Stan.
Steven, I dropped this, so I can be more mindful of this, listening to her there.
I love you.
It's wonderful work. For your group, uh, additional, that was presented December relation votes at five million, three hundred and sixty-one thousand, one hundred and ninety-eight dollars, and gross.
Your group, say.
All right, have you voted, Mr. Van?
Wait, a minute. Aye. Will Young, June, you got it?
Martha, hit side.
Hit both sides. Hit us all the time.
Just to give you an idea of where we're standing right now, um, as of December first, we're at fifty-nine feet in, uh, legend for December brings us to eighty point zero three percent, uh, over twenty twenty eleven. Uh, just for comparison purposes, when we saw the same time for last year, we were only seventy-two point seven percent. So we are well ahead of where we were last year and as long as that trend keeps going, we'll be very happy with it. So as far as, uh, I am concerned, uh, collections direction will really just fall back. Hopefully we will. Uh, along with collections, sometimes family releases. So for the month of December, I have a total of seven thousand four hundred and eighty-four dollars and sixty-eight cents for your group.
All right, we have the releases in five and Mr. Cameron Phillips has made the motion to approve, do I hear a second?
Sure.
Mr. Woody Hall Young with his second motion.
Wait, a minute. Go talk. Will Young, June, you got it?
Martha, hit side.
Hit both sides. Hit us all the time.
All right.
As you can see, the sales for December, uh, just taking a scatter plot across the county as far as, uh, just different areas, sales process, we can be showing that same level trend that we've been looking at for the last seven months. Uh, the sales numbers are still robust. To say the least, for December, we were at one hundred and forty qualified sets, uh, with seventy-four percent assessed values, which also shows the same thing, trends, uh, in sales process, people can notice, and in comparison purposes, last year, we get seventy-one sales. So, you know, sixty-three sale for, um, here, here today. I keep using the word unprecedented, we're not doing these reports, but unfortunately that's what it is. Uh, so, um, we'll, we'll see if these numbers can continue. I'm not exactly sure how they can, but, uh, they do what they will. So any questions or concerns that I may address?
I didn't think there was sixty, how did we have two seconds?
I'm getting one. So, uh, Mr. Dunn asked for some numbers last month. I have not heard last from those, uh, other counties, but I have heard from the public counties, we've been on that conversation as far as issue that he's seeing running out. We haven't exactly seen it here, not aware of, but what he's saying, those people in the public, they're just putting their house on market to see what they get. If it's a settlement, then they can't afford to say they can't because the prices are also high, they're not realizing enough of their sale to, you know, for, you can't produce it. So, uh, anyone who's looking to put their house on the market just to see what they can get, I'd caution to, to realize that there's an upside at that point, and they won't say there could be more excuses in the law, right? Uh, so that seems to be an issue with the public and Mr. Ward is dealing with it, and hopefully all the other community groups and she had questions, uh, I hope she said and I'll get that in the mission, so.
Sounds like some big costs. What would you stick out?
Absolutely. Thank you all.
All right, Mr. Bruce, we have one more day before our taxes to the penalty.
Yes.
Okay. Before thirty tomorrow or on the internet till midnight?
Uh, or it can be postmarked on tomorrow's date as well, and with the slow moving of the mail. Yeah, uh, so normally we look at, say, the ten days out and take postmarks, this year we have to, it's more simple because how the mail is, they run away, so, uh, it's one of those with a postmark, same period for the duty date. So if you need to drop one in the mail, it's also not a problem.
Thank you, Peter.
Thank you, Mr. Bruce. All right, we'll move right along. We amended our agenda for three point three C EMS rights.
I cleared the room.
It was mine, it's not your. Sorry, man.
Okay, so thank you again, uh, since you gave me the notes, uh, number for today. The first box will show you our current rates. I'm just giving codes there. Basically, we're starting with mileage, going with a non-emergency transport all the way up to hauls going up on. And that's the figures you'll see there on those rates. Here's that second box, we've got the amount Blue Cross, the hotel one that allows. And you can see a lot of that there, we're giving some money on the table. They'll currently call, so they contacted us this morning about this, because they just started getting this money, you know, they wanted us to go. I think that you have a copy of that, too, actually. Got three boxes along there for you. The first one is the amount deal for this haul. Those amounts, six hundred and fifty-one dollars. Seventh box will have part there for you, is the allowed amount, seven hundred and eighty-nine dollars and eighteen cents on that haul. Third box will bug right for you, where we left a hundred and eighteen dollars and eighteen cents, that will possibly connect to the count. This is an allowable amount, it will lock interpretation unless they're maybe self-claiming, but we do have programs, they have a financial ownership. And on the first page, we've got a suggested rate, say, based off of a free schedule for the possible route. And they go a little bit above that, not much. Because Medicare's not going to be there, and they can be just a little bit higher, a little more, above where Medicare. They usually post their free schedule for January and March, so we've got a lot of money on that. That's all. Any questions?
How long has this been since we gathered a pre-decide?
Soon.
I'm looking for. The new situation. Michelle.
Mr. Van. Let's make the motion, Mr. Van. Woody Hall Young, his second, it's. Everybody's in favor of us using the amount that Blue Cross and Blue Shell has set before us and raising my rates, the suggested U rate? Have you voted?
Wait, a minute. Will Young, June, you got it?
Martha, hit side.
Hit both sides. Hit us all the time.
All right. We will vote with the U suggested right.
Thank you very much, we appreciate it.
We thank you. Why not?
Thank you.
Thank you, lady.
Now, going to press immediately.
I'm sorry, what?
People are going to attack.
Today. So personally, you're to feel the loss of yourself. Well, Linda?
Thank you.
Thank you.
He goes without saying, thank you all for what you've done. You know, if I'm not thrilled by it, it's, it doesn't go on, I was such a Christian.
Christian, thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right, we'll move right along with our agenda to three point four. County constitution reports and requests our county manager.
Afternoon, board, and, uh, first of all, what a beautiful building we're sitting in today. Just want to thank the taxpayers, I want to thank you, the board. Beautiful job, thank Gary and his staff and, and Franco and Boomerang. It's great. I cannot wait till the day that COVID is officially over and we gather with two hundred and eighty-eight people inside this building. So looking forward to that day. COVID continues to be a concern for day three hundred and one on the state's emergency declaration.
You're right, day three hundred and one, until we walk out.
Yes. Uh, currently today, uh, Avery County has a hundred and twenty-eight cases as of the city, the numbers last Wednesday, nine proud of those of community thirty-three are in our correctional facilities that we house. We are below the state average at eleven point three, the state average is thirteen point six, so your population based on those numbers of over one hundred thousand people. So, uh, I'm going to celebrate that because it has been four weeks of us being over the state average. So I'm not going to let anybody take that thunder away, and that's probably maybe a hundred and fifty. We'll just, we'll just wait to see. The tariffs act funding, uh, must be over on the thirty-first. I just got an email this afternoon before I walked in this building, and it's being extended. We have had a plan, we, uh, carried out that plan, and I plan to bring you all an update next month of, and citizens of the county to let them know where that here's actually coming in, in our report district. Uh, but the funding has been extended to spend until December of twenty twenty-one. However, we're down to about eleven thousand dollars on that, on that spend. So, uh, like I said, just got that email today, and I will. So, uh, like I said, just got that email today, and I will have a webinar about that on Thursday. Final report was due Friday, so now, we still have a report due Friday, but, uh, it will not be final report. Any questions on COVID or the CARES Act? Need just a couple of other things in your package. You've got the Low Income Energy Assistance Program with our E S S department, help get that word out. You do not have to come line up at the door. You do not have to go online, you can simply call seven three three eight two three oh, and someone will help you with that energy assistance. I want to brag on, uh, the Avery County School System, and Tammy Woody, which was here earlier today for putting together what she called the, uh, Avery County Schools Christmas fruit project. She raised enough money with help from local donors, over ten thousand dollars, to give about, uh, six hundred and, uh, I had that number written down right here, five hundred eighty-six students, a Christmas meal, and gifts through the school system. And she wanted me to make sure I brought all the sheriff's department for all the help for those days, uh, feeding half every family's, all the help that they gave, and of course, all the donors. But she, you'll need to tie on the vaccine, you see, or for putting that program through, because that was a great Christmas program. And that is all I have.
Yep, yep.
You mentioned we are, and the COVID testing is going on. Yes, sir. Uh, the, the state has worked out the teams on the, on the COVID testing, and it is Monday, Wednesday, Friday, and Saturday from nine to six. There's a, uh, couple of local people not working for this company, and they understand Avery County, and that we provide service. And we provide great service. So that, that is for around, and that testing is going on today.
What hours do you say, Mr. Phillips?
Nine to six. Monday, Wednesday, Friday, and Saturday. And I will mention, I got off the phone with the day, and you can brag, the health department before I got here, they are going to implement phase one A. They hope to be finished with that this week, and we will roll that with the vaccines. And also that Walgreens and C V S have gone into go into our assisted living facilities, and has started to, the vaccines there also. So, it, it's going to be slum. It's one versus one A and B, and then we'll go to one, uh, two, and then it's phase three, and then phase four. So, I'm, I'm just asking citizens just to be patient till it's recovered. We will get you.
So I'll give half, Mr. Phillips.
That is.
All right. Well, does any commissioner have any comments at this time? If not, we'll move right along with our agenda, three point four B, our finance officer, Mr. Taylor Pope.
Good afternoon, board. I just have a couple of items from the day. The Avery County Board of Elections has received money legislated through House Bill number five. Give a hundred dollars for each poll worker who worked during the administration of the November third convention state election election. Requested board to adopt the following budget in the debit, wages, poll workers, my item forty-three hundred dot zero two four zero seventy, seven thousand seven hundred dollars. Into credit, election revenue, my item thirty-seven oh six.
Now, I hear a motion to adopt.
A motion to adopt, certainly.
All right, Mr. Phillips, make the motion, and Mr. Banks second it. How would you vote, Mr. Banks?
Will Young Jr. side.
Will Young Jr. side.
Martha Hicks side.
Kim Phillips side. Bill Halligan side. Out of number two, state board of elections, um, has been awarded a grant from the Center of Tech and Civic Life, to provide bonuses for early voting workers, uh, equal to nineteen dollars and fifty-six cents per day. This money was given to the state and distributed to all counties equally. This would be in the debit, wages, poll workers, my item forty-three hundred dot zero two four zero, of two thousand three hundred forty-seven dollars and twenty cents. And a credit to elections revenue, my item thirty-seven oh six.
Now, I would mention that if the board, uh, authorized this, they also need to approve, uh, they need to authorize the seat of the grant. Grant, not, not instead.
All right.
The motion is authorized to receive the grant, and help this.
All right, yeah. Here, a second on this.
A second.
All right, Bill seconded.
Will Young Jr. side.
Martha Hicks side.
Kim Phillips side. Bill Halligan side. And people, that's all I have today. Hope you all have a great new year.
Thank you, that's good.
We didn't want to file those that did vote, or worked in the voting. Home court. After five, when they were out with the COVID, and they worked with that, and they did a good job, and they decided to get this money that's been purchased. All right. We'll move right along to three point four C, our county attorney's report, Michelle Pope.
I, I don't have anything in the report that is already on the, uh, agenda unless the board has.
All right, we'll move right along to three point seven, approval of the minutes. Three point five.
Yes, we have exactly what you request, but we do have close to that.
Yes.
Three point six.
All right, and three point six, we're going to have some things that makes the paper that's in post-pleasure. And this will be our attorney client privilege, G S one four three dash three one eight dot one one eight three. And we will then try our manager, our, uh, finance officer, and our Mr. Phil, our county manager, assistant, and partner for, and our attorney. But I hear that the motion to go into post-pleasure, so. All right, Mr. Banks has made the motion. Uh, here is second.
Second.
Mr. Dana Sollberg seconded. How would you vote, Mr. Banks?
Will Young Jr. side.
Will Young Jr. side.
Martha Hicks side.
Kim Phillips side. Bill Halligan side.
All right, we will go into, uh.
I know this is second to you, we have to ask you to leave.
I got it.
And I mean to call Ben.
All right.
All right, we're back into our regular session, coming out of the closed session with no votes taken. All right. Three point seven, approval of the meeting for December the seventh, twenty twenty. If the ones that have changed, we will vote those and read them. I hear a motion that we approve.
Yes, shake it.
All right, Blake Lance make the motion and Woody Hall Young second it. How many votes for it?
We're red side.
The Bo Young Jr. side.
Martha Hicks side.
You both side.
You both all the time.
All right. Three point eight, our agenda consent items. We have chunks to look over those. Are there any questions? If not, the consent items will be adopted by consent. All right, three point nine, informational items. We will be closed January the eighth, fifteenth, yes, for Martin Luther King Day. All right. Three point ten, our upcoming meetings. We thought that we might be having to set a special meeting this coming month. So we'll wait for Cindy to inform us with that.
And we need to be thinking about if the board would like to do a board workshop. And we think we want to do that last January or February. You know, we normally have one here in that town. But if the board would like to do that, we need to talk about that.
Yeah. There's some funds that we need to pop that in workshop. It's on the list. We invite that same financial people. They have seen these, you're putting on the list.
So do you want me to send y'all an email and let y'all look at your calendars? We see that something at the end of January, first of February.
No problem. All right. And our next regular meeting will be February the fourth, first. All right. And if we don't have any more business, I hear a motion that be adjourned.
Sure.
Okay.
All right. Mr. Woody Hall Young make the motion and Mr. Ken Phillips second it. All in favor, Blake having a vote.